Legislation gives the governor the opportunity to have quarterly cuts. And so we're waiting for, the first cut was supposed to be April 30th. That did not come. No numbers were given to any school districts. And now we're waiting for the second cut, which would be June 30th. Third unknown is the stimulus package. Or is there a stimulus package? Is there going to be a stimulus package? Is there going to be bailouts? How much would they entail? Are they coming? No one has a crystal ball. So I think that it's important to, in the confines of this budget and this budget presentation, it's important to know those unknowns exist. And then here in Lancaster, we have another unknown, which is dissimilar more than in about a decade and dissimilar to other school districts in that we have reevaluation, which was done by the town of Lancaster this year. And that presents some misunderstandings and misinformation and some unknowns as far as how it all will translate to the average person that is looking at their bills and those kind of things. So again, in addition to the traditional budget pieces, that we need to speak to these pieces as well in this presentation. Next slide. One of the things that was turned on its head was the actual budget procedures themselves. I think everyone knows, I hope, that the vote is Tuesday, June 9th, but it's happening up until June 9th for the first time. Governor Cuomo's executive order basically said that there's a pandemic and there are no large group gatherings. So consequently, he directed all school districts and mandated, all school districts were mandated to send out ballots to all qualified voters. So here in Lancaster, those ballots were received starting Wednesday and Thursday of last week. I think they're in all homes. We've pretty much been assured of that. So 33,000 ballots went out to all qualified voters here in Lancaster for the first time in history. So again, there is no group gatherings. There isn't a budget vote in the schools, but instead ballots are in your homes. One of the other pieces, it's important to know, that's different from previous years. In essence, those are all absentee ballots. In the past, absentee ballots needed to be postmarked by 5 o'clock on the day of the vote. That is not true with Governor Cuomo's executive order. They have to be here to the district by 5 o'clock on June 9th. There are rumors that that may change, but until Governor Cuomo via executive order changes that, we'll go by the existing executive order. Next slide, please. So the proposed budget is $114,492,104. Budget to budget increase is $4,972,225, and that represents a 4.5% budget to budget increase. There are some important things that I want to discuss about that. And then that first, this started out as a larger budget and has been reduced by $1.53 million and is $1.53 million less than the initial budget. I think it's important for people to know that this is not a wish list budget, but is instead a budget that preserves all programs and keeps Lancaster schools and the opportunities for our children in place as we know it now. But again, we know that cuts are coming. We just don't know what they are, what specifically they are as far as numbers are concerned and when they will actually occur. I think it's important right in the beginning to also say that the Board of Education had a number of different budget work sessions like they traditionally do. When the coronavirus hit, they were forced to go online and those continued. And a lot of work was done at that time. And it's imperative that people know that throughout those budget work sessions, one important piece was highlighted. This year, we have $1.2 million worth of special ed costs that we hadn't had in the past. We have a group home, special ed students in a group home that was in a different section of New, Western New York, in a different community that has now moved to Lancaster and the school district is is going to have to cover those costs. Additionally, we have special ed students, high cost special ed students that have moved into Lancaster. And the reason I'm saying this is that that $1.2 million was highlighted numerous times as a large increase that we have to bear. And had that $1.2 million not been in the budget, this would have been a 3.4 budget to budget increase this year. Next slide, please. At this time, we're going to have, I'm going to ask Jamie Phillips to go through the actual numbers. Andy Kufu will do the program budget and has some things that he'd like to show you. And then it'll come back to me for a conclusion.
Hello, thank you, Dr. Valli. The budget is required by New York State to be presented in a three-part budget format. And those three parts are administrative instruction and capital component. So we will go through those now. These charts are the same charts that are in the budget newsletter, so they will match that information. If the slide is harder to see, people can reference their budget newsletter. The administrative component of the budget provides for the overall general support and management activities for the district as a whole, including the district office functions, district-wide expenditures, business functions and building administration. It is the smallest portion of our budget and that comes in at 9.7% of our overall budget. This portion in the proposed budget is increasing by 3.7%. Contractually obligated salaries and benefits account for 2.3% of this increase. About $75,000 is attributed to incremental increases in our legal fees and our liability insurance costs. And about $70,000 is attributed to BOSI's costs. Next slide, please, Sandy. The program portion of the budget is the largest portion of the budget by far. It is 74% of our overall budget. This portion contains all of the expenditures directly related to student instruction, classroom instruction, special education, technology, transportation, extracurricular activities and student support services like the guidance office, social workers, library and the health office, just to name a few. This portion of the budget maintains all current programs, class sizes and student opportunities as Dr. Valli mentioned earlier. The annual major cost driver in the section of the budget is contractual salaries and benefits for instructional faculty and staff. That includes about, in this section, I would say probably 875 employees. And that count does not include substitute teachers and support staff. So aside from salaries and benefits, the outlier this year is that $1.2 million in special education costs that Dr. Valli discussed. Tuition for additional special ed placements for students that have moved into the district. Tuition and transportation for the students in the new group home within the district. An increase in related services costs and just transportation, increase in transportation costs for all of these students. These expenses are all aidable by New York State to an extent, but that aid is delayed a year. So for expenses in the 2021 school year, we would report those and then receive aid back on them in the 2122 school year. So with the costs being added for 2021, we will, on the aid side in 2122, also see an increase in our excess cost aid that we're receiving from New York State. So there's some other expenditures in this section of the budget that are also offset in part or in full by aid from New York State. And that includes textbooks, hardware, software, BOSI's costs and also transportation. All of those are expenditure-based aids, which means that we pay for them this year and the aid on those expenditures are paid in the following year. So overall, this portion of the budget is increasing by 5.4%. The total increase is 87% of the total proposed budget to budget increase. At this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Kufu, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And he's going to provide some of our instructional achievements that are accomplished within the expenditures in this section of the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. As mentioned, I'll give a wait here for, as mentioned, this budget is a responsible budget, I believe, that allows us to maintain the standard of excellence the Lancaster students, families and community expects from us. It allows us to maintain all of our current programs, opportunities and class sizes. Take a quick moment, if I want to take a quick moment, if you will, to discuss a few of the highlights that illustrate what this portion of the budget is all about and really what makes Lancaster second to none. First, I would say that the high school, a couple, the high school has been named a recognition school for the second consecutive year. What does that mean? Lancaster High School is one of the top schools in all of New York State. It was also named a few weeks ago as a 2020 U.S. News and World Report Best High School. What does that mean? That our student achievement at Lancaster High School places us in the top 10% of all high schools nationwide. Why do I share that? It doesn't just start at high school. In Lancaster, it's truly a team effort and it starts as soon as our students enter kindergarten. Our teachers, our administrators, our students work very hard to align our efforts horizontally and vertically, K through 12, and it's paying off. At William Street, we offer accelerated math as well as project lead the way, engineering, creative writing, performance-based music as early as 4th grade and an art academy, all to our 4 through 6 students at William Street. We offer advanced coursework at the middle school in science and math and living environment and algebra. And more and more students are taking those classes and more and more of those students are excelling in those classes. At the high school, 70% of our students who are going to be graduating this year will earn proficiency on Algebra II Regents exam. This smashes our previous high. Next year's cohort of 2021 is on pace to be over 80%. We offer our students the Career Development Occupational Studies commencement credential, which is geared towards preparing students for entering the workforce, especially those students entering the workforce directly after Lancaster High School. Our special needs students work in and run coffee shops at some of our K-3 buildings and at William Street. Those students learn business skills, social skills, executive functioning skills with a practical application while enhancing the culture of those buildings. We have nearly 20 students in the next couple of weeks who will earn the New York State Seal of Biliteracy, a bilingual designation. Those numbers continue to grow. Why do we share these? We are able to meet our students where they are and help them reach their full potential through thoughtful programming and amazing people. We have seven career-themed academies preparing our students for life after Lancaster. The high school student union earned the Gold Council of Excellence Award from the National Association of Student Councils for the 16th consecutive year, one of only nine in the nation who have won the award since its inception. The Academy of Finance has completed the decade sweep, 10 straight years of earning the National Academy Foundation National Distinguished Academy Award. Once again, Lancaster leading the way. Our students have the opportunity to take 20 AP classes and 18 dual enrollment classes in which students earn college credit, thus reducing tuition costs and better preparing them for life after Lancaster. At Lancaster, our students are better prepared and more and more are taking these classes and our teachers are stepping up to prepare them. What are the significance of these opportunities? Well, the opportunities in Lancaster are second to none. This year marked the realization of a vision of our tech mentors and tech experts as well as our high school administration. It was the first annual Western New York Information and Technology Summit. About 40 of our students, including one from alternative program, had the opportunity to plan a conference, learn from peers and present at a conference with over 15 local districts, including students, teachers and administrators. It was a fantastic and powerful event. Speaking of powerful, many of our Leadership Academy students had the amazing opportunity to not only attend the nationwide lead conference and present at the lead conference, but organize, run and emcee the conference. Why do I share that? Our students are getting real-life experiences that go beyond the classroom. Our Day of Kindness, including the family fun night, continues to expand the activities, mostly student-led, to not only promote kindness but service to our community. Each year, our students, our Lancaster students, under the guidance of our faculty and staff, raise tens of thousands of dollars and complete thousands of service hours that directly benefit the local, state and global community. A few of those that directly benefit are the Lancaster Youth Bureau, Roswell Park, Food Pantry and many more. Student leadership, as you may know, is a way of life in Lancaster and we have programs in place at all of our K-12 schools. The Good Citizens Club, Swiss, Student Union, SSAC and many other student-led leadership initiatives. Why do I share these examples? In Lancaster, we educate the whole child. Music, the arts and athletics. Lancaster Music Department earned the NISMMA Presidential Citation Award for Excellence for outstanding district-wide music programs. One of two to ever receive this in Western New York. Our marching legends participated in the Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade. Our drama programs put on Broadway caliber performances with Cinderella at the high school and Disney's My Son Pinocchio, Geppetto's musical tale at the middle school. As usual, our ensembles perform all over Western New York. And if you recall back to the fall, it was the grand opening of the Music Hall and Art Gallery. They quickly became a focal point for many recitals, events and at least five art shows displaying students' works from K-12 through 12. Two of our music teachers were awarded some fantastic honorary honors. Lynn Ruda was named a finalist for the Grammys 2020 Music Educator Award out of more than 3,300 applications. Richard Goss was named the best jazz trumpet player in all of Buffalo. Our student athletes, not to be outdone, at all levels achieve success on and off the playing field, court, mat, pool, track, you name it. We've had individual state champions and those who placed the state level in indoor track, wrestling, gymnastics. Section champs in football, cheerleading, boys soccer, boys basketball, girls bowling, girls indoor track, boys cross-country. Division champs in wrestling, girls ice hockey, girls soccer. We have nearly 1,300 student athletes who participate in 73 teams. 32 of those student athletes will be going on next year to maintain their careers at the collegiate level. Six of our student athletes were Scholar-Athlete winners. 78 were Scholar-Athlete Honorable Mentions. This is with no spring sport, as you know. All of our varsity and winter programs had GPAs greater than 90%. I've left off so many other fantastic happenings in Lancaster. The Living Wax Museums at Hillview, the LMS Transition Fair, the Day of Giving, Rebound for Research, the 25th Annual Hoops for Heart, Balls for Bucks, talent shows, guest artists, walkathons, color and pumpkin runs and so many more wonderful events. I could not possibly list them all. So I have tried to show you some of the other activities going on and this is still a small sample size. But many do occur without much fanfare because Lancaster is second to none. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Dr. Kufu. I understand, even though it was just a snippet, I think you really explained a lot that we have going on in this district that the board is certainly interested in preserving for a long time to come for our future students coming through the ranks. I will move on to the third component of the budget, which is the capital component. The capital component provides for operation and maintenance of the district's facilities, so the Buildings and Grounds Department, debt service payments from capital improvement projects and also transfers to other funds, including our annual $100,000 capital outlay project. It represents 16.14% of the overall budget. This portion is increasing by 1.3% over the current year's budget. Contractually obligated salaries and benefits for the Maintenance Department and about $50,000 for mandated lead testing, which we are required to do every five years. And 2021 is the year that it needs to be done. Are the main cost increases in this section. Our debt service, which is from code 9711.6 through 9760.7, is from construction that we have been doing for years, dating back to 15 years. All of the debt service overall, that's out to be $8,000 less than the previous year, even while including an expense for BOSI's construction that was approved by all of the component districts this last year. Debt expenses, as a reminder, are offset on the revenue side by both building aid and the use of our debt service reserves. So the net total for the entire debt service expenditure is covered on the revenue side by two revenue streams. Our transfers to other funds include $100,000 for a capital outlay project, which would be the replacement of a few classroom floors in the high school for 2021. The transfers are also for summer special education services, which the state requires us to pay out of our federal fund and then also for unpaid meal balances as the year wraps up, which the state also has been requiring us to do for the last couple of years. Next slide, please, Sandy. So overall, by component, this just reiterates the totals and the percentages of the budget. So compared to last year, the last year's administrative portion was 9.75, so it's slightly reduced at 9.68%. The program portion was 73.6% last year and is 74.19% in the proposed budget. And the capital was 16.65% last year and is 16.14% in the proposed budget. So the administrative and capital components are slightly less and the program portion has increased by 0.6%. Next slide. So here's just another breakdown of the expenditure side of the budget. It just shows a different way. It shows how to look at them in groups of expenses, which is what's considered by object through our generally accepted accounting principles. So as you can see, the first two lines are salaries and one of the last lines is benefits. Salaries total $58.5 million of our budget. Benefits total $25.6 million of our budget. So for 966 employees plus substitutes, $84.1 million of our budget is salaries and benefits. That accounts for $3.5 million of our $4.97 million increase. So salaries and benefits are 74% of our budget. And this is typical compared to previous year's budget. We are always in that 74% range. And then pertaining to the $4,972,000 increase in the budget over last year, 70% of that budget to budget increase is attributed to salaries and benefits. A few of our other increases, I think we've basically talked about all of them. In that contractual line, you'll see a $1.2 million increase that is related to those special education tuitions, related services and transportation of those students. You see in our BOSI's line about a $300,000 increase and that's related to additional special education services for students that go to BOSI's programs. And then also a decent amount is from an increase in the science kits that we purchased through BOSI's based on the new standards. Onto the revenue side, I will mention that the budget vote is based on the total expenditure budget. So what you're voting on is the expenditure side that was just presented. However, we are required to present a balanced budget. So we are required to present you with estimated revenues on the other side that balance to the expenditure budget that you're voting on. So we will discuss the property tax levy in a couple of slides, so I'm not going to dwell on that here. We have, Dr. Valli mentioned, questionable revenues this year. Questionable, they're unknown at this point and we do not have any answers at this point. So we have crafted both the revenue and the expenditure side of the budget, just as if we were, I'm sorry, just had something pop up on my screen. Just as we were going on business as usual and preserving our programs and we will have to adjust some of those unknowns may come in to play. So with regard to state aid, that is one of our large revenue sources. While state aid is flat in terms of foundation aid this year, we also had a pandemic adjustment, which was just under $500,000, which was a negative offset to our state aid amount. But the federal stimulus CARES money is offsetting that. So we know it is on the books as a negative, but then we also have the offset of the CARES Act to cover that. But the reason really why our district's state aid is going up by $1.1 million is predominantly an increase in our building aid based on the capital project work that we're doing. So foundation aid, which is general aid to education, is remaining flat. But that bump for us, which most districts are definitely not experiencing, is because of that capital project work. But that building aid is also what's being used to offset on the expenditure side our debt service payment. So if I can take your attention to the bottom half of the slide, the use of fund balance, the use of reserve funds. We have scheduled to increase our use of reserve funds by $660,000. We are currently estimating to use our reserve funds to the maximum extent possible in accordance with the law on each one of those reserve funds. We've also increased our appropriated surplus, which is money that is remaining from this year and carried over to next year by just under $1 million. So between reserves and fund balance use, we have increased those areas by 22.16% as compared to this current year's budget. Next slide, please, Sandy. As you can see, the property tax is the major driver of our budget. Our revenue side, which is 49.72%, state aid is the next largest at 34%, appropriated surplus at 7.75%, sales tax at 5.6% and other miscellaneous smaller revenues at about 3%. So to give you context, the 1920 approved budget property tax percentage was 49.68%. So 0.06% difference in terms of the share of the revenue pie that property tax is covering. State aid was 34.55% and is 34% for 2021. And the other major difference is the appropriated surplus, which is the revenue in the appropriated fund balance. And last year was 6.63% of the revenue pie and this year it is 7.75%. So as you can see, it's really that appropriated fund balance that's picking up any of the other revenue shifts. Now, the discussion on the property tax levy. So the first thing to discuss is the cap, the infamous 2% cap. So every year, we calculate our tax cap limit and it's based on several factors. The CPI, which is assigned by the state, the growth factor that's assigned individually to each school district by New York State every year. We also are allowed to have carryover and certain exemptions. We reviewed that calculation thoroughly at our February budget work session. So our 2% cap number for 2021 is actually 4.69%. And that is $56.96 million. The budget that we are presenting, we are estimating the total levy to be $56.92 million. So that is 4.62%. It is 38,716 below the tax levy cap. So we are within our property tax cap levy limit for 202021. And that means that the budget would require a simple majority approval, which is 50% of voters that cast their ballot plus one.
So what does this translate to? In Lancaster, as far as tax rates for 2020, 2021, Lancaster would see a tax rate of $14.89 per thousand. Cheek to Waga, $17.63 per thousand. Elma, 371.9 cents per thousand. You know, I want to address a couple of things. I received two phone calls from friends and people in the school district this week, this past week and or last week. And you know, they were commenting on one chart in the budget newsletter. And they said that the chart sort of portrayed that all taxes were going down and they felt as if it was disingenuous. And I just wanted to say that, you know, if it came across to anyone as disingenuous, then I apologize. You know, the buck stops with me. And if anyone felt like that out in the community, then you know, I do apologize. So let's just talk about the facts. The facts are these. That $14.89 per thousand for Lancaster is the lowest tax rate in a decade. All right, the facts as we get them from the town, as far as the reevaluation are concerned, are that 50% of homes in Lancaster are, have reduced assessed valuation. 50% of homes have increased assessed valuation. And one house in Lancaster stayed the same. So what that means is that 50% of houses or homeowners in Lancaster are going to experience a decrease in taxes. Those taxpayers that received an increase in assessed valuation, that's less than 20% increase, will also receive a decrease in taxes. And those people whose assessed valuation went up over 20% will be paying more taxes. Okay, so the two people that called me are in that group where they were over the 20% and that will receive, you know, will have to pay higher taxes this year. I think it's important to mention that the school district doesn't have any control over the reevaluation. We don't do property taxes and everything else. We're on a macro level. And we set the tax levy for school taxes, yes, but this process, whatever is done by the town. And at that point, I mean, those are facts as we know them. But at that point, it's incumbent upon every homeowner and every taxpayer to go and do their math. So I encourage everyone to get their tax bill out and see what their assessed valuation is and then multiply it by this tax rate. So again, 50% will definitely, definitely receive lower taxes. The people who are 20% increased as evaluation or low, lower will receive lower taxes and those people over 20% of increased value assessment will have to pay more taxes. So I just wanted to be clear about that. So that's, that's the way it works. So again, please do the math. Please take that assessed valuation and compare it to last year, 2019 and 2020 and see what your individual difference is. The school district does not have any of those numbers. We do not know what, you know, the houses in the village are and the houses out on Summerfield Farms, et cetera, are your individual thing. It is really important that you do that for yourself and then weigh, you know, that expenditure. You know, I think that every year, school districts who go through a reevaluation, you know, right after the town does it, are always worried about, you know, the vote next year. And you know, it's concerning to us because I just hope that people aren't taking their anger out on a school district for the reevaluation and the assessment process in those ways. So please, I encourage you to go and, you know, do that math and see how it is for you and your family and to actually get the facts as it pertains to you individually. Next slide, please. So we've talked about this, but I'll say it again. You know, Lancaster is the number one cost effective school district in Western New York. And we've been that way for over a decade. We're also number one administratively efficient school district in Western New York. And the reason I say that is it's important to know that when you are lean and efficient like we are, it also, when cuts happen, there's, they're more painful, they hit harder and they hit more quickly into the things that people appreciate and like about this school district. The contingency budget is a budget, if the budget were to fail and the school district accepted a contingency budget, it would be $111,978,962. All right, that is a difference of $2.5 million, basically. So that is a huge amount of money. Let me just be honest with you. So let's review what we know so far. Fact. Our state aid difference is that is flat this year and the difference is 1.2 million dollars. So we're already down 1.2 million dollars. If we were to go to a contingency budget and our budget would fail, it would be another $2.5 million in budget, in budget cuts. Additionally, like I said in the very beginning of my comments, we have unknowns. One of the unknowns is state aid. All right, we know that the governor will in, on June 30th or in the future and those three more quarterly cuts or three more opportunities for cuts base his cuts on revenues that the state has. What if those were, we don't know what the number is. What if those were $10? What were, if they were a million or what if they were $5 million? Let's go with $5 million. We know that county sales tax is down. You know, people haven't been out buying and doing things normally and in the ways that they're used and accustomed to. So we know the county sales tax. I've received three letters from the county stating that, you know, the, the shortfalls that they're experiencing. We don't know yet the actual numbers, but if it was $100,000 or a million or 3 million. So 1.2 million plus 2.5 million plus 5 million plus 3 million is $11.7 million in one year. The other unknown that I talked about was the bailouts, the stimulus packages, those kinds of things that are coming from the federal government. I expect and I, you know, would say that not the reason that Governor Cuomo and the state education the state is not giving out numbers on April 30th is probably because they're waiting for, to see what the federal government will do and how those packages will unfold. Also similarly with the county, how will things change? What will change? What are the actual numbers? So we don't know what that is and I don't have a crystal ball. Please know that all 707 school districts in New York State are in the same boat trying to budget and do those things with a lot of unknowns. But what I can say with all certainty is that if they played out that way, you know, you can lower them or increase them any way you want. But there is no way that this school district could handle those kinds of cuts and preserve program and do the things. Our school district and our opportunities for children would be dramatically, dramatically different from what they are today. So proposition two, next slide, please. Is for 965 passenger school buses. The cost of the proposition is $1,089,354. And that's at no additional tax impact because it comes out of our transportation reserve fund. Next slide, please. The vote itself is on June 9th and we have three candidates up for the Board of Education. Glenn Jackson, Mike Sades and Patrick Utech Jr. I'd like to personally thank these individuals for stepping up to the plate and commend them for stepping up in this way and being a part of this school district that we desperately need their leadership and look forward to them of being part of it. At this time, I have questions and comments section. So we're on a Zoom meeting. If anyone would like to speak or ask a question, please use the chat feature and Sandy Janik is the host. And she will unmute each individual one at a time. You can ask your questions and we'll do the best we possibly can to answer them.
Mike, while we're waiting, I'd like to add that the STAR exemption, if people qualify for that, is going back up because we're at 100% now to 30,000. And we will also still be receiving rebate checks from the state like we have for the last few years.
Sandy? Any questions?
I have an Elizabeth that would like to speak.
Elizabeth. Can you unmute her, Sandy?
I'm trying to find her. One second.
I think I'm unmuted.
There you go.
This is in regards to the graduation plans. I don't want to speak out of turn. Is that coming up at a later time?
Right now, this is the budget hearing portion of the board meeting. That will come up later. Yes. Thank you for waiting. Questions on the budget or the budget presentation, please? Difficult to find out if people are trying or whatever else, Sandy, if you don't have anything, then we'll move on.
I don't have any other chats.
Okay, thank you very much and we'll move on to the next portion of the board meeting. Back to you, Mr. Utech.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bailey and thank you, Dr. Kufel and Mrs. Phillips. Just before we move on to the regular session. You know, I think it's, it's clear that schools in the area have really stepped up. And I know specifically Lancaster and DePew have continued to meet the needs of students and families, especially being thrown such a drastic change. And I think our virtual learning, the teacher reach outs, the nutrition program. And I speak for DePew as well because I'm a teacher there. But I think what people see is the value of teaching and instruction, but also the connection that school districts have with the community. And I know that I have told Dr. Bailey and the administration all throughout this process that, you know, if we have any hope of getting back to normal as everyone wants to do, especially for our students, to get back to normal, it's incumbent upon districts to create responsible budgets, as we in Lancaster have done for many years now. But school districts really have to create responsible, efficient budgets, which can maintain and return students to programs and offerings, sports, drama, technology, music, all those things that really make school districts wonderful places to be. We would hope that we can return students and their families when we can come back around to in-person school to what we've come to expect here in Lancaster. And that's what this budget does. And it's traditionally in Lancaster, an efficient budget, one that passes along, I think, a minimal tax increase to the taxpayers. So I would hope from my point of view that the community would support this budget. And I thank Dr. Bailey, Mrs. Phillips and the whole administration for preparing with in the cooperation or with cooperation of the Board of Education, such a responsible budget. So I would encourage those in the community to fill out your ballots and send them in minimally. Everyone has the right to vote and should exercise that right. So with that, I'll adjourn the budget portion of our meeting for this evening. And now I'd like to call to order the session, the regular session of Lancaster Central School District. And since we're starting a new meeting, I'll ask you to once again stand for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Sorry about that. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we had our presentation for this evening. We'll move on to 5.0 correspondence. We received an email from Joseph Hiri on May 13th, 2020. Anyone else from the board have any correspondence that they'd like to speak of?
I received a phone call from a Mr. Gene Krug. On, it was Thursday, May 28th.
Thank you, Mr. Tellerico. And I know that we talked about that phone call and that gentleman was responded to by multiple administrators as well, correct?
That is correct. I believe Dr. Bailey and Jamie Phillips spoke to him, I believe, that day.
Good, thank you. Anyone else from the board have any correspondence they'd like to speak of? Okay, 6.0, 6.1, or 6.0 is approval of minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept our regular session minutes from our May 11th, 2020 meeting? Questions, comments, all those in favor? Those opposed, so moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Adamac?
Yes, thank you so much. Hi. Last, I would like to thank the Board of Education and the district office for their leadership during this most challenging time. We know there are many more challenges ahead of us and we believe that our school district is in great hands. We'd also like to thank the teachers of Lancaster as they have truly stepped up to support our students and our community during this most unprecedented time. Lancaster has always put students first. The pandemic has not changed that. Thank you for allowing us the tools to provide our students with the very best education possible. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Adamac. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. I just want to echo a lot of what Zadimak just said. You know, that the teachers are very appreciative of everything the district has done to help continue to provide education. As for the budget, the LCTA is making phone calls to NICIP members throughout the district, encourage them to cast their ballot in support of the budget. We're going to be making the calls over the next few nights. LCTA members have also been very hard at work, helping the district to clean out student lockers and have volunteered with the distribution of student effects from those lockers. Teachers will also be assisting with graduation at the high school and have continued to assist the district with its meal distribution. Finally, looking forward to the next school year, the LCTA remains willing to work with the district on for the start of the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? Okay, and anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, thank you. 8.0 is board reports. Anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report upon? Okay, I just have one board report, which has to do with the Lancaster administration. I'd like to thank Mr. Marchioli and his staff for the messages and the correspondence that we've received regarding graduation. I've talked with Dr. Bailey at length regarding this and my daughter Vanessa is a senior this year. And it's been very difficult for her and her friends to have to forego the traditional ceremony. Speaking selfishly, I was looking forward to this one quite a bit, shaking my daughter's hand on, on stage and shaking 500 or so hands of Lancaster. and shaking 500 or so hands of Lancaster graduates. That's my, obviously, my favorite part of the year. But the pandemic has posed several difficulties for mass gatherings. And I think districts are scrambling. And I think superintendents are working closely together to try to coordinate their efforts, given the restrictions that we have coming from the state and the Health Department, but especially having to do with those mass gatherings. So given the nature of the limitations that we have thus, at this point, I think our administration has done a good job of putting together and communicating those plans in cooperation with the various student leadership groups, putting those plans together to try to make the best of this situation. So again, my appreciation to the high school staff and those putting that together, and also the student leaders for voicing their concerns. If we could do it all together and in person, we would. But contrary to some of the things that are being thrown out there on social media, that's not advisable. It's not allowed right now. So we're doing the best with the situation that we have. And I remain appreciative. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vallee, 9.0, the superintendent's administrative report.
Thank you very much. I'm good. I think I've said enough tonight. I'll get you at the next meeting.
Well said. Thank you. 10.0, old business. Anyone from the board have any old business they'd like to report upon? Okay, 11.0 is new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1 are the personnel changes. Could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
I'm moved.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So approved. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Educations Report?
I'm moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So approved. 12.4, business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So approved. 12.2, policy adoption, 5676, privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. Could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.3 is the food service monthly reports for April of 2020. Could I have a motion to accept the food service report?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So approved. 12.4, we're appointing election inspectors. Could I have a motion to accept those appointments?
I'm moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.5 are 2021 substitute rates. Could I have a motion to accept those rates?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So approved. 12.6, this is the point of the year where we approve the payment of all bills to clean off the books. Could I have a motion to accept the payment of the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.7 is a contract with Omni Financial Group. 12.8 is a contract addendum with Associated Physical and Occupational Therapists. 12.9 is a contract with Pediatric Home Nursing Services. Could I have a motion to accept those three contracts?
I'm moved.
Questions or comments on any of those three? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.10 is our surplus bus report. Could I have a motion to accept the report?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So approved. 12.11 are the auction results. Could I have a motion to accept the auction results?
I'm moved.
Again.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So approved. 12.12 are revenue anticipation notes. Now, these are not loans that we are asking. In anticipation of a lack of revenue, we, at low interest rates, we can take out promissory notes if, in the event that that happens. Could I have a motion to accept the anticipation notes?
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Same with the 12.13, the tax anticipation notes. Could I have a motion to accept those notes?
I'm moved.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So approved. 12.14 is the construction change orders. Could I have a motion to accept the change orders? We got a second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Like to point out at this time that in a in-person meeting, your faces, the board faces kind of look a little bit clustered. Now, looking at all of your board faces right in front of me is a little bit daunting. So I'd like a little enthusiasm from Abby Jackson or Davenport or Fletcher. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that.
This is what I did on the health insurance committee meeting the other day, too. I gave Abby a lot of face in the rooms.
Thank you very much. I'm glad I can only see one page of faces right now because maybe two might look them over the edge, but.
Here to serve you.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Fletcher. 12.15, the bond sale is for information only. 12.16 is a contract with East Aurora Union Free School District. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
I'm moved. Again.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tellerico. Thank you for the wave and the smile. All those, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So approved. Thank you. 13.0, we have our public hearing, and we do have two speakers for this evening. First is Mrs. Elizabeth Peck. Ms. Peck, if you could unmute yourself, you're welcome to address the board.
Thank you. And while I respectfully understand your feelings regarding graduation plans, I have some different feelings that I'd like to express to the board and to the district office. First, I would like to specifically thank Mr. Marchioli for his leadership these past few months. My daughters are graduating as seniors and involved in the Leadership Academy and have commented several times on how Mr. Marchioli has sincerely listened to their concerns. As for the district office, I have another message. The seniors deserve more than the meager graduation plans you've laid out for them, and they've told you so on numerous occasions during several student government meetings, and they have been ignored. During these unprecedented times, your team has accelerated the graduation schedule, thereby excluding the possibility of an in-person ceremony, and you should be held accountable. This is one of the last, one of the last times that we as parents are giving these students a voice. And make no mistake, we're here to speak and be heard. This is not the first time any of us have stepped up for our students. As you might note, the success of several of these district programs stems from the extra work these students do and the parents that stand behind them. The letter you posted regarding graduation plans was somewhat insulting. To suggest we stay in our cars, take advantage of the opportunity to roll down passenger side windows, and take up close pictures of our students as they cross the stage alone is unconscionable. You should be embarrassed for suggesting that to any of us, the board included. And before you cite the large class size, I say this, these kids have all been together since fourth grade at William Street School. And this district knows what it takes to graduate 400 mediate students from the planning that's required to do so, and so do the parents. I reached out several times with an offer of assistance, and I have a list, as long as I am tall, of parents who would step up to help. And you know why that is? Because these are the same parents that go to work every day, some of them working two jobs to pay for private music lessons, travel sports teams, extra art supplies, and to put food on their tables. These are the parents that are driving their kids to the high school at 6:00 in the morning because their son or daughter has a concert coming up or needs an extra workout with a coach, or they're organizing a school event and need extra time before classes start. They make all of you look good because of their hard work. These are the parents that show up in droves to build sets for the play, to help with receptions after musical performances, and drive all over town to support the Lancaster Legends sports teams, many leaving work early or using vacation time to do so. They go the extra mile, and they show up every single day, and our community is strong because of it. With a little bit of leadership and organization, they would help with graduations. It would be different, but it could be epic. So when you rob a color houses and tell us you're literally kicking these kids to the curb and handing them their belongings, I take offense. These seniors are not hanging out on Central Avenue, listening to the alma mater being piped through the speaker system, and they're not driving around town looking at red house lights. In fact, they're working in our grocery stores and restaurants as essential workers in the midst of a pandemic and in this unprecedented time. They know how to social distance. They've been doing it for months now. And although many, not all, could have quit their jobs and stayed home, they didn't. They showed up, and now it's your time to do the same for them. I respectfully ask that you wait a few weeks. Move the ceremony to an outside venue, such as New Era Field, the Lancaster Football Field, the Field House. Hold it there in late June or early July. Merge resources with Frontier High School. The ceremony is now scheduled at the Lancaster Speedway, right in our backyards on the very weekend our students were supposed to graduate from Kleinland. Allow the kids to walk the halls of Lancaster High School in their caps and gowns, six feet apart, one last time with the teachers in their doorways of their classrooms six feet away. Let their elementary school teachers into the auditorium as their graduates pass through, wearing masks if necessary, so they can exchange one last smile, if only with their eyes. These are the educators who have written down the pages of these young adults, and to our seniors, they are cherished teachers. Honor the past of 2020 properly. They are part of the reason this community is thriving. They are part of the reason families continue to move to Lancaster. They are part of the reason your property values keep increasing. They are funding this district through their excellence, and you are grossly undervaluing their contribution and their commitment. Lancaster needs to arrive to the occasion and finish strong. Our seniors need closure, not their lack of content handed to them at the sidewalk with a virtual goodbye. These students deserve better than what we've organized, and I know I speak once again for a silent majority and not everyone, but I know I for sure speak for my daughter Hannah. I ask for transparency and accountability in the district office, this unnamed entity that is supposedly deciding these things for our students. I hope that whomever the district office is, you reconsider your plans and not allow this to be a marker on your conscience or your career. We've been asking for weeks now to be heard, and the lack of communication from the district office gave us hope that you were planning something amazing and holding out for an in-person graduation. In fact, several sources have said otherwise. A virtual ceremony was always the plan, and no other options were considered. This, of all things, is by far the most disappointing. To know that this was something to be rushed through and crossed off the progress to-do list is shameful. There were no last concerts, no last games, no senior recognition night, no prom, no grad walk, no senior breakfast, no academy graduations, no last day of school. I beg you to reconsider your graduation plans and for the board to take action. It's time for the paid and elected officials and adult leadership in Lancaster to lead by example, step up, finish strong, and be a voice for these young adults. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Peck. We also have Mr. Joe Menudo. Mrs. Janik, is Mr. Menudo on the call?
I am. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yep. Hello, Mr. Menudo.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to just go through three different things. First of all, I want to echo the thanks on behalf of the entire community towards the teachers who have stepped up tremendously during this time. They didn't really miss a beat, and it's a testament to Lancaster's commitment that they have to our students. We couldn't have done it without them, truly, as parents. So thank you very much to those teachers. It's appreciated. Secondly, when I heard that Mr. Kay was retiring from the middle school, I literally just said, I'm joining the next, I'm going to the next, the next meeting. Because he set such a tone for that middle school and such high expectations that we are so appreciative of his time and his service. We wish him nothing but the best. And I hope that Lancaster can properly replace him because he will be sorely messed. All of my kids sincerely enjoyed being in that school, and I felt comfortable sending my kids there every day because of it. My third topic was also the graduation. What Elizabeth had said, I think, is it's important to note that I have also heard many of those same comments. I think that she said it very, very well on behalf of the community. I've heard that many of those things over and over and over again. However, I do understand that this is not what we wanted to do. This is, no one would have chose this option. And I do thank Lancaster for what they are doing, particularly people like Mr. Marchioli, who took, according to my phone, 18 minutes to personally call me today and speak to me and go through different reasons why Lancaster is approaching it like it is. And without going too in-depth or taking too much more of your time, I sincerely hope that you do take into consideration what was just said. There's no reason to repeat those things. But given the fact that we are under constraints of the Health Department, and there are obviously decisions that are made behind closed doors for certain reasons, I hope that if there is ever an opportunity in the future to recognize our seniors as an entire group, that Lancaster takes that opportunity to do it, even if it is after this current graduation ceremony. Because it's wonderful that they're going to be given a chance to walk across the stage, but it obviously is in a parking lot, and most importantly, it's on their own. And that's not the kind of community that any of us would want to stand for, especially the people here. I just told my wife, how inspiring is it that so many people are stepping up to do such a great job for our kids? And it's my hope that even after this current graduation ceremony that is planned, that if there is ever a health opening for us to get together as a whole community, that it is planned because it goes without stating that they sincerely deserve it. So thank you for your time and mostly thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Menudo. And with that, that effectively ends the public portion of the meeting. 14.0 is an executive session for board members only to discuss the superintendent's year-end evaluation. So, Mrs. Janik, are we going to remain in this Zoom call for the executive session?
You have a separate meeting set up for the executive session, so you'll have to leave this one and go in that one.
Okay. Now, do we? Okay, so we'll leave this meeting. And are you ending the meeting for all, or are we just leaving this meeting?
Well, you should come back after executive session and end the meeting.
Very good.
Yeah, Mr. Ute will leave this one going. We'll go to executive session, then we'll come back to that one, and you will adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Hey, Jane.
Hi. I move that we go into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, let's go into executive session, please. I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna jump to that computer here. Can you? Can you go?
I don't want, I'm trying to get out of here. Can I leave this meeting if I set it up? I don't know if I can either, but.
Someone else the host? You can make someone else the host who's remaining, Sandy, by going to manage participants in the bottom. Because if you leave the meeting as the host, it'll end the meeting. So if you go to participants on the bottom and click on it, you can go to maybe one of the administrators and make them the host, and then you can leave the meeting.
Are we in the right one? Because I can't get in the other one.
I was just, I was just coming back to say what it sounds like you guys already figured out. It looks, it looks like I can't, no one can get into the other one without somebody being the host of it.
Hey, Patrick.